Everyone, welcome to the regular council meeting for the town of Southern Shores. This beautiful Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025. We're happy that you're all here. Sorry for the somewhat delayed start, but here we go. We're going to kick it off. If you'll please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Council, I'd like to propose a slight amendment to the agenda as presented to you. Under Presentations Number Eight, we're going to postpone that until the January meeting. So, motion to amend, motion to adopt this now amended agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no, thank you. Okay, so we're good to go on our agenda. We have an unusually heavy consent agenda. So, I'll just go through it. We have minutes from the November meeting, we have a budget amendment, we have the consideration of the community action team appointment, a contract clarification for earned vacation time for our town manager, historic landmarks commission appointments, tax pickups, and releases. Are there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Hearing done, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Thank you. Okay, moving right along to our presentations that we are going to do today. I think we're going to start off with Wes Haskett, and presenting some recognition for five years of service to the town of Southern Shores for Marcy Baum and Kevin Clark.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I got it right, that time. Afternoon, not evening. Yes, so we're going to be congratulating the majority of the planning department this afternoon. We'll start with Marcy Baum. Marcy, if you want to come up, please. Marcy began her employment with the town of Southern Shores on November 16, 2020. She came to us after working for a local mechanical contractor, so she was already somewhat familiar with our permitting process. As the town's permit officer, Marcy stays busy, and she is usually the first person that contractors and owners see when they come to visit the planning and code enforcement department, and is always with a smile and a positive attitude. Marcy's primary responsibilities include assisting citizens and contractors with obtaining permits and scheduling inspections, which involve extensive face-to-face or over-the-phone conversations that she always handles well regardless of how overrun her desk may be with files and permit applications. Thank you for your service and congratulations on five years. Next, Mr. Kevin Clark. Kevin, if you'll come up.
Kevin began his employment with the town on December 1, 2020. He came to us after working for Dare County as a building inspector, and prior to that, he owned and operated Kevin Clark's Electrical Contracting. Kevin is highly dedicated to the position, and it's not uncommon for him to meet with an owner or contractor at a site at 7:00 a.m. or return to a site on the same day for a reinspection after corrections are made. Kevin holds Level Two Building Electrical Fire and Plumbing Certificates, and as the town's building inspector and code enforcement officer, his primary responsibilities include performing inspections, reviewing building plans and site plans, and addressing and answering code-related questions. Thank you for your service and congratulations.
If Marcy and Kevin would indulge us for just a minute, and me and Wes up at the front, we'll take those photos that you like to see in the local newspaper.
The whole grip and grin.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. We'll start with the oath of office administration, actually, to me. But I wanted to take a minute right now to say, to share with you all that Councilmember Paula Sherlock is unable to be with us because of family commitments that she has, and she has already had her oath administered to her by our clerk Sheila Kane. So she is sworn in. So, I guess I'll make Sheila and my husband Tommy in the front.
I am Elizabeth Moyer. Hereby solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina, not be insistent thereof, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties imposed upon me as mayor of the town of Southern Shores to best my skill and ability according to the law so help me others.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next. Election of Mayor Pro Tem. We're very, very lucky to have Matt Neal serving as our Mayor Pro Tem, and he has graciously told us all that he's happy to serve again. So I would like to nominate Matt Neal as our Mayor Pro Tem. Is there any other nominations, or may I hear a second for that nomination?
Second.
Oh, we seem to have support.
We're glad he's here.
Thank you.
Very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we have a Mayor Pro Tem. Matt, congratulations.
Thank you.
I guess I should have said something out after I sworn in, other than thank you all for giving me another four-year term. I'm looking forward to serving with these wonderful folks up here. Matt is a wonderful Mayor Pro Tem. We have excellent council members, Rob Nielsen, Mark Botanick, and couldn't do it without Councilmember Paula Sherlock. She's wonderful. So, we have a really good council, and I'm grateful to be a part of it. Matt, did you want to say something?
I appreciate you all entrusting the honor of being Mayor Pro Tem again.
Excellent. Okay, very good. All right, so the other appointments that we need to decide on are the Admiral Rural Planning Association, which Wes Haskett is our staff member rep there, and Paula Sherlock currently serves in that capacity for the town, and she has told us that she is more than willing and happy to serve again. So, I think we'll by consent honor that request. And we have the Dare County Gov. Ed Access Channel Committee. Currently, that position is being filled by Rob Nielsen, and Rob has graciously said that he is more than willing to serve another term. So thank you, Rob, for doing that.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, now the more complicated one, which is the meeting schedule, which I think we have a copy of in here.
Yeah.
So, we have a couple of Wednesday meetings because we have two elections next year. So that's Wednesday, March 4th, and Wednesday, November 4th. And then, we have changed the April meeting to, instead of the first week of April, it is now the second week of April because of spring break, Easter break for the schools. Other than that, it's first Tuesday, which I think everyone has seen this, and everyone was comfortable with this. And then the only question we had was, do we want to continue with the 1:00 p.m. meeting time start, or are we considering changing the meeting time from 1:00 p.m.? Thoughts?
Well, I like the 1:00 p.m.
You like 1:00, okay.
But, but nothing wrong with a morning meeting either.
Nothing wrong with a morning meeting, okay.
Okay, and but certainly considerate of those that have to work at a regular job, like our Mayor Pro Tem.
Right.
Or the kids are in school, or, and all those kind of things. But I think one or 10, either one would work well, and it gives the citizens, those that are, you know, here, a chance, either one, to participate more than the 5:30 meeting.
Okay.
And, and our staff is here as well. Our staff is on duty as well.
Makes it easier on staff, so we don't add up overtime.
You bet.
Okay.
I would say generally been able to adjust for one, but looking forward, if our meetings run any longer, it becomes a conflict for school pickup with my wife and I, so 10:00 a.m. would be preferable.
And I don't have any problems with 10:00 a.m. either. Rob?
10:00 or 1:00 is just fine.
Okay. And I have already talked to Paula about it, and she was fine also with the 10:00.
6:30 in the morning.
6:30 in the morning, yeah. We go jogging first, and then we'll have the meeting. So I think what we are, by consent, Sheila is adopting a meeting schedule.
Can staff have their reports ready by 10:00 a.m.?
Are you good with that, Sheila? Staff reports?
Okay, I mean, coming from the staff, okay, all right.
Okay. Cliff, any, any other issue? Okay, okay. So, going forward, do we want to start this in Janu-? Yeah, we'll start in January. This is the last meeting of the year, duh. Okay, so going forward, starting on January 6th, we'll meet at 10:00 a.m., and we'll stick with that unless we decide that we hate it.
Or the public complains.
Or the public has an issue, but so far it's been a non-issue. So, okay. All right, so, motion to approve the amended council meeting schedule as presented.
So moved.
And?
Second.
Second? And, okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, and I think we're done. That's a resolution, so that does that. Okay, now, moving on to a regular meeting, staff reports. We'll start with our planning director and deputy town manager, Wes Haskett.
Thank you again, Mayor. Starting with November permits, there were 42 permits issued. Those consisted of 12 zoning permits, 22 building permits, six trade permits, one lot disturbance stormwater management permit, and one lot disturbance demolition permit. The total amount of fees that were collected in November was $12,273.22. You recall at the previous meeting, and maybe the meeting before, I reported on Paul Gammel's Hill Life Saving Station site and its potential designation as a historic landmark. The Southern Shore Civic Association Board recently met, and they decided that they're not in favor at this time of designating a part of the Hillcrest Beach Access as a historic landmark. So as a result, we're no longer requesting the appointment of a committee to discuss that potential designation as a historic landmark. So, if the opportunity comes up later where they are interested, then we can certainly start the discussions again, and we'll request that appointment. But we will continue working with the SSCA. I think there was some discussion about replacing the sign that's out there right now that talks about the site. So we will work with them on that to replace the sign that's out there at the Hillcrest site that has the information about it. And lastly, with respect to the December Planning Board meeting, they'll be meeting on December 15th at 5:00 o'clock here in the Pitt Center. They'll be considering two ZTA's. The first one is a, an application submitted by the SSCA, and that is to amend Town Code Section 36-97. That would be to amend the town's current height limit for fences in all zoning districts. And then the board will also be considering another ZTA that will be submitted by the town to amend the town's current wastewater system requirements in Chapter 32 Utilities, Town Code Section 36-207, to establish community and non-community wastewater systems as special uses in the commercial district, and Section 36-298 to clarify that the building inspector shall not approve a building permit for any building for which state or county Department of Environmental Health approval is required until such approval has been given. So, the December 15th Planning Board will be considering those items, and we'll see how they go there, and they may be coming to you all in January for a public hearing. Any questions on any of those items or anything else?
On the life-saving station at Southern Shores Civic Association, just feel it was necessary, or further discussion was needed?
They just said they're not interested in designating a portion of the property as a landmark at this time. They own, the site is on the historic beach access parcel, which is a pretty good size of property, and their board met in November. I wasn't at the meeting, I didn't hear the discussions, but I did answer a few questions between myself and the president, Mr. Jeff Johnson. I think there were some questions about limitations that may be on the property if it were to be designated.
Well, the only reason I bring that up is, at the tour board, we approved a grant from the tour board for Kitty Hawk Life Saving Station, and where they're going to rebuild the, I forget where it is, down there, one of the beach accesses. Anyway, there's grant money available as well. I'm trying to say, if money was an issue, you know, and they'd go before the, you know, the tour board, just like, just like you do for sidewalks and everything else.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's available. I guess maybe getting that word to the civic association might be helpful. I think it'd be kind of neat. I mean, there's a reason that we brought that up to begin with, as part of the history of the town, and to memorialize it, and the grant can be small or big, it matters what, what they think about it, the civic association. It's just a thought.
Yes, sir, that's a good suggestion.
I guess the resident and paying them dues, I should tell them that, huh?
No, sir. You certainly can, but I'll be-
I think it comes better from you and Cliff.
I'll be, I'll be sure to bring it up with Mr. Johnson next time.
It is something that, you know, you know, it is important to the outer banks.
Right, and we had, I think it was Mr. Nielsen, Councilman Nielsen, and yourself, I think, we talked about potential members to be on the committee, and we had a couple Landmark Commission members that were going to be on it, and then I reached out to Mr. Moyer, who was involved with making the video that you all watched, I think it was September, October council meeting. He was willing and able to participate as well, so we will bring it up with them again, and we'll see where it goes.
The cost wouldn't all be on them, or whatever. I mean, it's got to be some, I think it'd be kind of cool, that's all.
Right, I'll bring it up with Mr. Johnson, and then also maybe not only for designation, but it may be helpful for the sign that's there now and that replacement.
Yeah, it'll give us time. I think the next grants are-
Next September.
Yeah, yeah, for those kind of grants, it's then. It's not the other grants. Okay.
I also was not at that meeting, but my guess is as follows. They may not want to do a historic designation where you have to provide access. And so therefore, with access going down there, and if you're not, if you don't have a Southern Shore Civic Association permit, somebody comes down there and parks and say, wow, this is a nice beach. I'm going to stay after I look at all of the historic designation here. So my guess is, that is also an issue that probably needs to be addressed, and, you know, how would you do that, whether people, you know, just more and more folks are just going to come in there to park and stay?
Is that a requirement for our historic landmark?
Not that I'm aware of.
I didn't think so.
But, I mean, it's a good point, folks, if they are aware of, if someone is not a Southern Shore's property owner, a member of the Southern Shore Civic Association, if they read about or they heard about the designation, they may be interested, and they wouldn't be allowed to go on the property. So that's a good point, still.
They can go on by foot, they just can't park.
They could, yeah, they could go by the beach, yes, sir.
The, with no structure present, what are the limitations with it being a landmark?
Um, so, they wouldn't, they're not necessarily limitations. It's, it would require, if they wanted to make any changes to the site, external, it would require Landmark Commission approval. They would have to obtain a certificate of-
That was probably the rub.
They have to obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Landmarks Commission.
And that's fairly subjective for the commission, since there's no structure present?
Since there's no structure present, I mean, it would be if they ever wanted to make any changes, physical changes to the property within the site. Now, it wouldn't apply to the entire parcel.
Let's say they wanted to build a bathhouse.
If the bathhouse was in, was within-
What would the Landmarks Commission be able to do? Make, say it's got to look like the license? I mean, what guidelines are they following?
Construction would have to follow the, it would have to be similar to the materials and preserve the historic nature of the property.
But there's nothing- But there's nothing there to follow.
There are guidelines. The Landmark Commission has guidelines. They're general, they're general guidelines. But it's, it's, it's basically as long as you are not interfering with the historical integrity of the site.
Okay.
But that's a good point. If they ever want to do a bathhouse, and it's within the site, then it would, I would just, what comes to mind is that they would probably have to do something, you know, use materials or have a design that's similar to a lifesaving station or the original lifesaving station.
Gotcha. Thank you, Wes.
Which would be a cool bathhouse, by the way.
Yeah, I, I was thinking the same thing, yeah.
For some grant money.
And it's not to say that it can't be done. It's just saying, it's just adding a layer of review and approval by the Landmarks Commission. So we can certainly bring all these ideas and thoughts to them and discuss this again later.
The grant money comes from tourism dollars.
Sure.
And that's where it all comes from, you know, it's collected.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you all for your-
It should be continued.
Continued.
Thanks, Wes. Oh, never mind, I'll ask you later.
Okay. Next, we'll hear from our police chief, Chief Cole. Good afternoon, sir.
Afternoon, Mayor, members of council. November 2025 incidents, which are the actual crimes that were reported, we had 14 of those for a total of 22 total offenses. We had four criminal arrests. Let's see, we had, out of 70 traffic stops, the officers issued 18 written citations for a total of 28 charges, and another 47 warning citations for a total of 50 charges. We had three parking and a right-of-way violations. We had four reportable motor vehicle accidents for the month of November. And as you can see, we had 1,743 calls for service. That's about 68 more than we had in 2024. Any questions regarding that report? Only other thing I'd like to add is that, just an update, our two recruits are still doing just fine at the Basic Law Enforcement Academy, myself and the deputy chief. We, we attended a meeting up there. We're trying to get a basic law enforcement training academy set up here. So we're hopeful for next year. But we had an opportunity to kind of oversee and kind of watch the cadets in action when they were doing SCAT, which is subject arrest techniques and those types of things. And our two cadets are doing pretty darn good, so. Knock on wood, February, they'll hopefully graduate. Any other questions?
That's really good news. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Limbacher, our far chief. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. For the month of November, it's kind of busier this year than past years. We were 12 ahead. Last year, we answered 63, but it broke down pretty much like this. Two structure fires, one chimney fire, 47 EMS calls, one motor vehicle accident with a pedestrian, one with no injuries, one gas leak, one chemical hazard, two service calls, one of our address sign programs, one of our smoke, two of our smoke detector service programs, one public assistance, one assist police, one public service, seven cover-up standby cover assignment, three canceling route, and three fire alarms. So pretty simple, again, 75 for the month of December. If we keep on this pace in December, we'll probably have our highest year we've ever had. So I'm hoping it dies off a little bit, but we'll see. So, uh, any questions on that report? I just have a couple other things. Over the weekend, over the Thanksgiving holidays, we had crews out for the Turkey Trot. So we post vehicles during the run, and just in case there was any medical issues or anything like that. In the past, we've had some. This year, we've had none, which was good. Also, the crews were out on several structure fires over the weekend. So while everyone was enjoying Thanksgiving, we're glad they were. We were still working, so. Just one other thing I wanted to bring up, and I just grabbed Sheila. Can I have that? I'd be trying to do this for probably three years. And with Cliff's blessing, I finally got it done this year with a little help from my friends. But, um, I always wanted to keep, I always wanted to put cameras in the front windshields. And this was brought to light with different things that have happened down here. And we wound up getting a really good system, which I really like. And it's simple, so I can use it, which is good. But I'll just give you a little, um, a little brief, it won't take long, but why we did it. And I'll show you what the, uh, what you can see and what you can't see. So this is going to be, I think the camera in the front windshield here. So. Why is that there in the shield?
Right at the Waxverbal Hickory intersection.
I don't know why that's playing like that, but let me see if the next one will work.
Not the camera's fault.
No, that was working fine on my desktop. This is definitely operator error, probably. Maybe the player just doesn't jive with the right. I might have to bring up the other player. I don't know why it's, it's not playing smoothly like that, but.
Yeah.
Can I adjust that speed here?
No, no, try and go dots on the right.
Dots all the way to the right.
One more.
Dots.
Three little dots.
Three little dots.
I can't.
Three little dots. Speed.
Yep, speed.
One time.
Yeah.
Ellen?
Is that the right speed?
It's not the right speed.
You want to try that one?
Try, I think it's-
Speed shot.
That's fast for me.
So it's saving us. Next time.
Yeah, I'll see if I can get them work. We'll see if we can get it working for next. I thought it would just be pretty simple, but as usual, that never is. But the point of it is, um, we use it for training, and there's six cameras on all the big apparatus. So there's one out the front windshield, one behind you, one that monitors the side lanes, and then also there's two on the sides that monitor, you know, any incidents going on. And I'm big on documentation because I like, you know, sometimes you might forget something. There's a lot going on, it's something, a big incident. And you can go back and watch this. And it's not only good for that, but it's good for training. And most of all, it's good for liability protection.
Right.
Just the same way the police would have it. So, uh, that was a blessing that I had done this year that, um, I always, that was probably my last big thing I wanted to get done when I first started. So that's kind of cool that they're all done. So I will get it to work next time they come in. Me and Sheila will work on it, but.
It'll be good because your folks will be here in January.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll take more of your time.
There you go.
So, all right, any questions?
Uh, there's a big shout out on next door neighbor.
Yeah.
About what you did, what your folks did on a, on a smoke alarm in somebody's house.
Yeah, she called over.
You came and replaced the batteries, so.
Well, not yours.
That's your next call.
No, she called over Thanksgiving and, uh-
But it was, but it was, that was really cool. There was a big shout out on there, this, this lady.
She called over Thanksgiving, left a message on the phone. And Jack, Beth always checks the, uh, messages even though she's not there. And she just shot at the me, and I, we went up there and did it. So the guys did a nice job.
She said you even called back two days later to make sure it was good.
Yep. I'd rather go do that than have them fall off a ladder or something like that. You know what I mean, so.
Yeah, the other thing, yesterday about 3:00, I was at, uh, waiting on the light at, uh, at Walmart in Juniper, you know, at the cross. And Southern Shores was coming from the left, a fire truck. And at the intersection, it took him forever to get through there because people didn't get out of the way.
Oh, yeah, you always got to be-
I, I don't know how, you know, to prevent, I don't know if there's any educational programs for motorists or not. You know, I mean, nobody knows what to do, and there's an emergency vehicle. But, you know, when you hear a giant fire truck behind you.
I will tell you this, in my wife's, I, I just-
Everything had to come to a halt before you could get through.
On the newer cars and navvies, and I think Chief Cole can speak for this, the insulation's so well sometimes. People don't necessarily do it deliberately, they just don't even hear it.
Right.
You know, they got the radio playing, it's well insulated, so. And you can see, I mean, in the cab, next month, if I show you, in the cab, it is very loud in there. You can barely talk. I mean, you know, and they wonder why we have hearing loss and things. But that's, that's why, so. But I think it's not deliberate. I think people just don't even hear it.
It just was, uh, I don't know where they were headed. They were headed out, you know, they were headed down. Anyway, just a call.
All righty, anything else?
Thank you, chief. Appreciate you all. Next, we'll hear from our town manager, Mr. Cliff Oppern. Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you. I did just want to say a brief word about Forrest Hood. Forrest had 10 years of recognition. He couldn't be here, but I just, did just want to say, and David Bradley's at School of Government, so. But I just, did just want to recognize Forrest for his 10 years. And Forrest, uh, he was mighty young when he started with the town. And he's exactly what you would think of when you think of an old soul. He's very intelligent. He's, he, he has a very good grasp of common sense. He can sit in a room and listen to a whole lot of people go back and forth. And then he'll say, how about this? And everyone in the room goes, oh, yeah, why, why didn't I think of that? He's somebody that works behind the scenes. He gets the job done. He's a quiet force, and, and he's very much appreciated and valued in, in all that he does. And hopefully, we can keep him for another 20 years, so. That's Forrest. Brief, briefly, the beach nourishment, just to update you. I think I'll have more to report at your January meeting. Right now, the second quarterly beach nourishment meeting that happens between each of the towns and the county is being held. We're anticipating having a revised beach nourishment maintenance plan before us in the next couple of weeks. Lynn Schmitz and I went out a couple of Fridays ago, and we had talked at your last meeting about adding some sand fence. And we identified some, about 2,000 feet. I don't know that we would plant, I mean, plant, install all 2,000 feet. But that, these would be areas that either the fence is completely covered up or it's, it's not there anymore. And it would be supplemented with Lynn's plantings later on. But like I said, told you at your last meeting, we're, Kitty Hawk's going to go out to bid with all the leftover fences that they had. And so we're going to piggyback with them and, and at least get some of that fence installed. And, uh, we've got annually budgeted $24,000, which should cover the fence we're looking at along with the, uh, making sure we have enough for, um, planting grass. The, I think I also shared at the last meeting, the East Dogwood rebuild project for the street. That has been put out to bid. It's put out to bid today. Mandatory pre-bid meeting on that is December 16th. We'll open the bids on the 9th. And so at your Feb, February meeting, we should have a con, hopefully, we'll have a contract in front of you. It's a formal bid, so we'll have to get three contractors to, to bid on that. Hopefully, we'll, uh, have that before you, February 3rd, to approve. Yesterday, uh, we learned that we received $220,000 from the Tourism Bureau for, to continue working on replacing the, the sidewalk along NC 12. This is replacing the asphalt with concrete. So that's a 50% match. So we'll be doing about $440,000 worth of work from Hillcrest to the North Town Line. And the, the current project that we also received funding from, uh, from the Tourism Bureau, that project's finishing up. That was from Fifth Avenue, uh, up to Hillcrest. That project was about $185,000. And the only thing that remains to complete that is to, we're putting the pedestrian crosswalk on each one of those streets. We need to, um, put the thermoplastic down for that, and that project will be done. And that's my report. If you have any questions?
That's great news about the sidewalk grant. Any questions?
You might have just said this. When was the East Dogwood bid opening?
It'll be January 9th.
Okay.
And that completion date is May 8th.
That'd be fun.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Next, we'll hear from our town attorney, Mr. Philip Hornthal.
Good to be with you all. No report.
It's always good to have no report from your attorney.
All right.
Thank you, Philip. Appreciate you being here today. Anybody signed up for general public comment? Thank you, sir.
Nobody.
Anyone change their mind, decide they want to talk to us anyway? No, okay. We have no old business. So we're ju, going to jump right into, um, what's sort of new old business. Consideration of speed limit on NC 12, which is item 10 in your book. And it's on page 21 in your book. I think, Cliff, do you want to just sort of kick off the discussion with us?
So I think you've had the, you've got the traffic study in front of you. There were, the discussion you had, uh, that I believe, reading the minutes, there was, um, concern, obviously, the, the intent was to lower the speed limit. We lowered it to 35, but we noted that low-speed vehicles would be able to traverse on that road. There's been some, I think Police Chief has some data both on accidents and, um, speed, in, in case you need any of that. But really and truly, this is just for your discussion to decide whether or not what we have in place is working or if you think it needs to be amended. If, you don't have to take any action today. You have a lot of things that you could do today. But if you wanted to request anything of DOT in your packet, you'll see two certifications for municipal ordinances. You would need to, um, have a motion to adopt those two ordinances at whatever speed you set. One to rescind the present limit, another one to whatever your recommendation is. your recommendation is, and then that would be forwarded on to the Division One staff to concur with, and generally, that's what happens. And you, and also, you have in the, your packet, the general statute that clarifies that, that it needs to be based on an engineered study, which we have, and that study uses a lot of different components to, to, you know, it looks at a whole bunch of factors, and one of those factors did indicate that the, I guess, a appropriate speed limit could be 40 miles per hour, based on just one segment of that study, but overall, it recommended 35.
That's Member Botanic, since I think you were the one.
This is my fault.
To stir this up.
Yeah.
Would you like to kick it off from the council perspective?
Yeah. 35 is a great speed, but it allows low-speed vehicles on North Carolina 12, and, and the rest of the town, it's 25, so you can have low-speed vehicles, i.e. golf carts. There's a lot more rentals of golf carts that go on right now in town, and they most of come from Duck, and there's a lot of rentals up there, and there's a lot of rentals on the north side of town, just, no empirical knowledge or data to support that, it's just observation, is what I'm saying. So, I've seen on 12, folks try to pass these golf carts when they're doing 20 miles an hour, or 25, they get frustrated, especially the locals, get frustrated with the golf carts, and it happens at all times of the year, is what it does, it's just not then, and hey, I understand people have to be at work, and they, things like that, especially in the summertime. I think it's dangerous, I've seen folks pass these golf carts on the double yellow line, you can't get by them, even if they're on the shoulder, and they're not going to be in the sand, it's going to be in the bike shoulder with the white lane, with the white line on the lane, and it's impossible to get around them, and people get frustrated behind them, as they really do. I, you know, I've supported lowering the speed limit, and as the minutes in 2022 support that, but I think it's time we take another hard look at it and raise the speed limit to 40 during the off-season, I think we, in the old times, I call it the old times, the speed limit was 35 during the in-season, which is around May 1st, October 1, from the junction out here, I call it, up to East Dogwood, or near Trout Run, one, one of those two, I can't remember, and then it was 45 on the way, all the way up, we moved all that to 35. I think if we go back to 40 in the off-season, on the whole stretch of road from here up to the town line, and then we do 35 during the season, I think there's a balance that would keep a lot of the low-speed vehicles off the road, wouldn't frustrate the drivers that are behind them, both locals and tourists, and move, and just, for safety reasons, that doesn't sound right, raise the speed limit for safety reasons, but, you know, the studies show that accidents happen at 35, 45, there's really not a whole lot of difference, 40's in the middle, it's kind of a compromise, I realize that folks who live on Ocean Boulevard, especially on the ocean side, it's hard to get out in the mornings, in the afternoons, is there's a parade there of stuff going north, and vehicles coming south, and judging, but I just think it's time we take a hard look at it, because something's going to happen on one of these low-speed vehicles. If you look at the folks, I'm just, you're characterizing the people on the golf carts, they're usually six-passenger golf carts, there's kids on there, they're not wearing seatbelts, and seatbelt's not mandatory, and they're having a good time, because they're on vacation, okay, and I just, it's, it's a little bit scary to me, just like an e-bike is on the sidewalk, that's a whole nother story, so, if you want some neat reading, nevermind, I won't go into the e-bike.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. There was a great article in New York Times on Sunday about e-bikes, that probably would be, it's a nationwide problem, so, anyway, with that said, this is doing low-speed vehicles, I'm, I'm supporting a change in the speed limit, in what it takes, for those reasons, and, you know, if, if we have residents that own a low-speed vehicle, and they're using them, as long as you're not on 12, you could do the side streets almost to Duck, as Congressman, as Congressman, I almost called you Congressman, as Counselman Neil here said, you know, there's a way to get up to Seoats, pretty easy, even from the avenues.
What I, what I was concerned about is, you know, you're constantly changing the speed limit, up and down, it's almost, becomes cognitive overload for drivers, and so on and so forth, so, you know, potential compromises from, as Mark talks about, the junction over there by Southern Shores Realty, have it 40 all year round up to Seoats, and those folks who live in Southern Shores can actually go to Duck, and from that point forward, it would be 35 miles an hour up to the Duck line, and then it goes down, of course, in Duck, to 25 miles an hour, so, there's a compromise here, that you do it all year round, 40 miles an hour from the, in essence, the junction, as Mark described it, up to Seoats, knock it down to 35 at that point, and then all of our folks with golf carts, low-speed vehicles, they could access Duck from Southern Shores on the roads.
I like the way it was.
You like the what?
I liked 45 in the winter, and slow it down to 35 for that section in summer.
You, would, would you go for 40, though?
Yeah, I'd go for anything.
Okay.
I was rereading the minutes, it'll be the repeat, it's a very slow road in the winter time, when you need to go somewhere.
Yeah, and, and so if you went, I mean.
I do think allowing the resident.
In reality, if you drive, the people are doing 40 now, anyway.
Yeah.
They're not doing 35, okay, I mean, and they're even, even going faster than that, depending on who decided that, and, and, you know, I'm sure there would be some ramped-up enforcement, or, or monitoring, one or the other, if you just place a car out there, sometimes, people slow down, it's a patrolman is just sitting, they do that in Duck, right around the curve there, before Four Seasons, they, they sit there all the time, especially on Sunday morning, and, and they're slowing folks down, I think we could get folks down.
It used to be 35 from Trout to Southern Shores Realty.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
For Trout Run, okay.
And I, there's a part of me, just thinking about some of the efforts we've been doing in the Corridor Committee, I'm not sure I'd want to isolate a commercial district from the ability to get there via low-speed vehicle.
Isolate the community.
So you want a low-speed vehicle out on Ocean, on Duck Road?
I mean, we, we're, we've been comfortable with it being 35 from Trout Run to Southern Shores Realty for some time now.
Yeah.
I'm, I mean, there's a lot of risk in life in general. Chief, do you have accident data?
Well, they can access this without that.
What about that?
NC 12?
No, Southern Shores Crossing. Yeah.
I'm just, you know, I think of the American, it's just a bad man waiting. Yeah. You're automatically, one person, that person would kill.
I agree with you there. I think if the.
Sure, we'd love to see it.
Change, from what was 45 to 35 and so on.
We didn't save a lot of lives.
Thanks, Chief.
Basically flat.
So can you interpret this for us, Chief, do you mind staying at the podium, sorry? So the first group of numbers is NC's 12 speeding from 2020 to 2025. Is that speeding tickets written?
Yes, that's the actual speeding tickets that were issued.
So a lot fewer.
Must have used the same fire department camera.
2023.
Or not. All right, yeah, the speeding from 2020, this is just NC 12, and this is just the actual tickets that were written, this doesn't include probably a lot more warning tickets that were given.
Yeah.
But you can see, 2020, and that's back when it was, and this is for the entire year, so that's where, and it was 45 in the off-season, and then it was 35.
35.
So you had 100, you know, the officers wrote 102 speeding tickets.
35 to Trout Run.
That's correct.
Right.
And then, of course, 2025, keep in mind, that's only from October, because when I had Jennifer run these stats, that's when we ran it from, was October.
Oh, okay.
So it doesn't include the last two months. And then 2021, it was 116, and then in 2022, it was back down to 105, and then 2023, and these are, these last two years were the years where we had changed it to what it is currently, and it was 109, and then 2024, there was 127, and part of the reason for that is, we had two new officers that were pretty eager to get out there, write tickets to.
No, no.
I, I double-checked that, just because I knew somebody was going to ask.
Yeah.
And then the motor vehicle accidents, again, speed's not the issue with motor vehicle accidents, it's volume.
It's following.
It is, it's volume and, and.
Volume and distraction.
Not paying attention, that's correct, most of them are rear-enders, but you can see from 2020, there was 26, 2021, there was 39, 2022, when we changed, it was 32, in 23, it was 36, and then in 24, there was 34.
Okay.
So it's pretty much consistent there. I mean, I can't make the decision for you, I can just tell you that my only major concern has always been that, when there's, when there's an accident, I don't care how fast you're going, if you're in a low-speed vehicle, which is nothing more than a glorified golf cart.
Right.
And you get hit by one of these big four-wheel-drive trucks with the big steel bumpers on the front, you're going to lose, and I just don't want to have that happen in the town, if we can help it.
Speed limit, the rest of town's 25.
That's correct.
I mean, it's 25 in the rest of the town.
Yeah.
I have no, I have no problem with that.
No, and, and I understand, you know, the low-speed vehicle people will be upset with me, but.
Yeah.
I, I gotta, I gotta look at everything, not just the convenience of that, so.
So the, again, the whole point of doing anything is to, when we have lots of visitors here, we have more low-speed vehicles out there on Duck Road, NC 12, that's just a fact, we do, and does anybody see a lot of low-speed vehicles any other time of the year out on NC 12?
Going to school.
Going to school? On NC 12?
No, well, sometimes, but not when it's cold like this.
Not when it's cold like this, okay.
In general, it's the summer months, you're correct.
Okay, and just anecdotally, people who've complained to me about following a golf cart on NC 12, have said, please do something about having them out there, but they're not worried about accidents as much as they're concerned about their own inconvenience.
Right, right.
Which is another issue.
I'm worried about accidents, I mean.
I'm, I'm more worried about.
One of the worst fatalities they had on the beach was in a 25 mile an hour zone, I mean, vehicle versus low speed doesn't work, I mean, you're going to lose, it's motorcyclists versus a car.
Yeah.
So, the speed, to me, doesn't matter, but if you don't want them on the main thoroughfare, I'm game, in general, I just think we should look for some serious multi-use path for some of the areas in town that, that segregate them from vehicular traffic.
Well, and I think this could add to the argument of why we need some sort of serious multi-use path, which is, you know, we're, we're taking action because we are concerned about the possibility of an accident.
To stick up for those council members that live on Beach Road, as we used to call it, do we want to be any section of a 35? As we've all, now.
The compromise is that during the busy season, during the tourist season, May 1 to October 1, it's 35 in that stretch.
You mean 40?
Yeah.
It comes 40 at that time, because that would.
40 to keep the LSVs off.
Wait, wait, wait. So it's 40 in the off-season, then 45 the rest of the time?
Low-speed vehicles, low-speed vehicles would, would be off that section of road.
That, that's one option, the other.
And then what is it in the off-season?
Stays the same, the other option is to go back the way to work, that, that's one option, to where it was 35 to Trout Run during the season, and then, I'd suggest we go to 40, not 45, for the rest of the way up, and then in the off-season, it's 40 miles an hour all the time.
So never above 40?
Never above 40.
Because the, the report that we got from NC DOT, that's what they recommended?
Yeah, one of the 85 percentiles was a recommendation of 40 miles an hour for the entire stretch.
For the entire stretch, so this, this compromise would be to address low-speed vehicles during the season, have it, during the busy season, have it 40, and the rest of the year, 40?
Yeah, yeah, don't go down in the off-season.
Don't go down in the off-season, so let's just say 40.
Yeah, I'd rather do that than.
Fine with you?
I'm fine.
Fine with that?
The only, the only pushback you might get is from folks who own low-speed vehicles in Southern Shores that want to go.
That live on the east side of Ninth Avenue and just bop on.
Yeah, they, they're going to have to somehow get that one little section of road between, in essence, where the town line is at Seoats, and then get up to Duck.
And I, I kind of think it's the same argument as someone who doesn't agree with the fact that you have to have a helmet on, you know, to drive a motorcycle. They should, well, not, but when, when we did require that, you know, or, or I guess that's not a very good example, but anyway, so I think that the answer, Rob, is we're doing this to err on the side of safety.
Yes.
And caution, and I, I really think that's the best argument that we have.
I could agree with that.
But, you know.
So that's what we're doing, we're trying to keep LSVs from running into a car, for our car running into an LSV, trying to pass them illegally on W. Y. Y. Y.
If you're on the east side of, worried by people going to Duck, if you're on the east side of, of the beach road, you, there's nothing that says you can't cross the beach road and go up to Seoats.
Unless you're on Ninth, and you can't cross and get to anywhere.
There's no, there's no cross there, okay, all right, well, for most of it, it's, it's not perfect, you, you can still cross.
I'm fine, I'm just being argumentative.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know, okay, just Ninth and Tenth.
What are we going to do about cycles?
About what?
E-bikes.
No, no, cycles.
Oh, bicycles, okay.
I'm teasing. And loud music?
Okay, so, so Cliff, it looks like what we're deciding to do, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Very much, appreciate your help. Looks like what we're deciding to do, I think, is raise the speed limit to 40 year round, so changing the speed limit to 40.
So I think that would take two, two certifications, they're called on page 21 and 22 of your packet, one, one of these would repeal the 35, and then one would enact the 40, so I think it's a motion to that effect.
Okay.
Okay, so you need a motion?
Go for it.
Go for it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to repeal the speed limit of 35 on, what's the official name of the road?
NC 12.
NC 12. NC 12, from town line to town line, and I'll make a motion to move the speed limit, is that one motion we have to vote on?
No, I, I think it would, this, the, the motion would be, one motion, to repeal the 35 and to enact the 40.
The second motion is to raise the speed limit to 40 miles an hour, to set the speed limit, not raise, set the speed limit at 40 miles per hour on NC 12, town line to town line.
Is that sufficient in terms of a motion?
Sufficient.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, comments?
Just a quick comment, I do think as we're looking at mobility through town, that, whether, I, I agree not necessarily sharing the road with vehicles, but accommodations for low-speed vehicles needs to be something on the agenda, and hopefully, we'll, we'll have some suggestions for that in January, February.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that's hopefully coming out of the Corridor Committee recommendations is.
Okay.
All right, motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Now we march.
No, no.
Now you have to drive, follow home.
No.
It's, it's a, it's a problem.
Council business, Mark, would you like to start us off?
The, the tour, the council business, the tour board, everybody reads the Coastal Times, tour board occupancy was off pretty dramatically in September, and partially into October, lots of reasons, a lot of it was, is we had, how many double flag days did we have where you couldn't go swimming?
All of August.
The weather was, yeah, the weather was horrible, it wasn't the greatest, it was pretty outside, but folks couldn't swim, there, also, according to some of the statistics, there were a lot of discounting that was going on for rentals, which affected the income that came off of rentals, and also during that time, there's still, the biggest feeder market for our tourism here in Deer County is Washington DC area, and tons of uncertainty is still going on up there, as we all know, and so there's a lot of folks who are hesitant to come, to come down, retail sales were flat during the previous period that's reported, and meals were up, however, if you talk to restaurant owners, patronage is down, meals revenue is up, it's a tax on the meals, because the meals cost more, so, it's a, it's a, it's a mixed bag, is, is what it is. Deer County in 2025 was the fourth-largest county sales tax-wise collections in the state, only beat by, what's the county in Charlotte?
Mecklenburg.
Mecklenburg, Wake, Buncombe, and.
Asheville, yeah.
No, 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 I'm sorry, not Buncombe, New Brunswick.
New Brunswick.
And one, and they were number four. Statistics out, tourism dollars, I know everybody talks about tourism dollars and talks about the tourists in the summer, but we are, we are a destination, we do rely on the tourists for a lot of our business, they supply 40, tourism, tourism supports 40% of the jobs in Deer County, number one, these are statistics from the tour board. Number two, on average, the tour dollars collected, save the taxpayers, the individuals, save the property owners in Deer County, right around $3,840 a year, so, there's pluses and minuses to that, but we're continuing to put out the good news about we are saving taxpayers money, and in the next breath, welcoming the tourists here, making them part of the community, and that, and tour board is, is going. I gave Cliff the statistics. I gave Cliff the statistics on the county, as they were just published in our meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago. So it's, it's, it's good news, I, I think it's good news. And we have more events planned in the spring coming up, going forward, and again in the fall, as we're doing lots of things. I think there were six turkey runs, which is supported by the, by the, by the tour board in the county on Thanksgiving Day. So if you weren't out running, you were about the only one who wasn't there. So they were, they were all successful. But anyway, doing everything we can to promote the place and also keep it safe. Okay?
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Rob?
The server was down for current TV for a couple of days, and they had to get a new server, so there was no access for, yes, for a little while. So that was the big priority for a while, just to make sure technology kind of came back up. I'm the towns representative on the anniversary, 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. Both federal, state, local is, and county-wise are going to be big celebrations next year. The big kickoff will be April 17th at the Wright Memorial, and it is going to be a very, very big affair. And you will see all sorts of celebrations that are going on. On the January meeting, I've wangled a couple of people from the county to come up and give a presentation on all of the things that are going to go on. So at that meeting, two people from at least the Public Affairs Office, the head of the Public Affairs Office at the county level will come up, and possibly somebody from the Chamber of Commerce. They will be here, and there'll be a presentation, and it's, you'll see, it's, I mean, they've, they've designed logos and, and specifically for the county, and they'll present it. And you'll get a chance to comment on that. On a, on a personal basis, I remember reading a book called The Reflective Practitioner by Donald Schoen. And since this is the last meeting of the year, I'd like to really comment a little bit on, I enjoy, and I think everybody on this town council has the best interest of the town at heart. And I'd like to recognize that. And additionally, we have unbelievable volunteers, Lynn, of course, with the seagrass. And one person actually I attended on, on this past Friday. And we had one person come up from Manio, a young woman come up from Manio, who doesn't even live with the town to plant seagrass. I mean, it was bizarre, but that's, that was pretty neat, you know? It was pretty neat, you know? So people are doing a good job, but, you know, I've, I've worked with a whole host of different people in the town. And you folks are consummate professionals. You are dedicated, personal, of, of public servants, and you take your job seriously. Sure, we're a small town, but boy, oh, boy, we've got some good folks working here. And I'd just like to recognize everybody. So we got, I mean, we've got Cliff, we've got David, Chief Cole, we've got Ed, the chief, we got Wes, Sheila, Bonnie, Phil, Marcy and Kevin were here. And then recognizing in the back, we've got Sarah over there, who's usually behind that podium and who's waving right now. These people are consummate professionals who believe in the, in the mission and the vision of the town. And I'd like to recognize that upon reflection at the end of the year.
Thank you, Rob. It's always nice to be thanked and recognized, so, Mayor Proto.
I was going to thank you all as well. Rob, show my glory.
Didn't know.
I have a couple of short things, but the, was it last week? They're blending together. We had a wonderful luncheon for Thanksgiving, and I want to appreciate the staff for putting that on and including us. It was really some of the best pumpkin pie I've had in a long time, much to my mother-in-law's chagrin. But the, it was really, it was, it was great, and I appreciate you all doing that. Bonnie's already stepped out, but thank you, Sheila. And let's see, tomorrow, we have a Corridor Committee meeting at 9:00 AM. Probably not our last, but getting close to the last of phase one before we, we set up a date and a time to show you all what we've been working on and present our report to you. The following week, I am going for my last trip to Chapel Hill with the Our State, Our Homes. I think it's December 10th for the last forum that we're going there, or no, second to last forum. I'll have to go one more time in February, I believe. And then on the 16th, we're having our second meeting, the Deer Housing Foundation. We elected officers and got that situated last month, and we're trying to put things into action and getting some rudimentary organizational things together. But I am pleased to say that we are going to be taking up office space in Southern Shores. So the Deer Housing Foundation will have office space within town.
Oh, wow.
I think that's pretty cool.
Where, where specifically?
Behind Town Bank.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think it's Ford during the portrayal, I can't remember the exact address.
Okay. Very nice.
We, I don't know if we want to have a unveiling yet, but we still get some mopping down. But Town Bank was very generous in donating the space to us, and it's been fantastic. I was very happy to have it here.
That's nice. Yeah. Thank you, Matt. I just wanted to say that our next meeting will be Tuesday, January the 6th, at 10:00 AM. And I want to do a shout-out to Forest Hood, because I see him all around town, he waves to me. He sometimes smiles, sometimes not, depending on what's going on. But I know he's a hard-working guy, and I appreciate that 10 years working for the town, that's something to really recognize. So shout-out to Forest for doing that. Anything else, council? Staff?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we're done, thank you.
Thank you.